All right, we are now recording the meeting. We have one, two, three, four. Four, four are coming, for our President Chair Bishop. And Commissioner Harding said he's on vacation. So you have who you're gonna have for today?
Okay, so is Michael here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hey, Michael, it's Frank. Okay, so then let's begin. It's seven, seven o'clock. Welcome to Design Review Commission Meeting, Wednesday, November 3rd, 2021. First item on the agenda is to establish the quorum. It sounds like we have four of the five of us here this evening. So what I'll do is I'll call the roll. And if you could just answer here, let me call your name. That would be, that would be great. So Jude, here.
David, here.
Michael, here. And Frank. So we have a quorum, there's four of the five of us here this evening. So with that, we'll proceed with Guido, public comments of items not on the agenda. Do we have anything from the public? Anyone from the public that would like to speak on something not on the agenda?
No one has indicated, but I'll give them a couple more seconds.
Okay.
We have one person, Hittal, would like to speak, Chair Bishop.
Okay, please proceed if you have an item that's not on tonight's agenda. We can't take any action on the item, but we're happy to listen.
Thank you, Chair Bishop. I have a comment on the October 6th minute. There is a, for October 6th minute, there is a neighbor of ours, Gretchen Swall, spoke in support of all the 41 Marvin project. And I just wanted to make note that it says instead she spoke in opposition of the project. Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Guido?
No, but if Hittal could email us that name and then we can correct that in a minute.
All right, thank you. I will do that, Guido, now.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so we'll close the section of public comments of items not on the agenda and move into the section of items for consideration and action. First item is the consent calendar. We have one item here, which is the Design Review Commission minutes of October 6th and October 20th. Do we have a motion from one of the members to proceed or approve these minutes from both meetings?
I will, I will move to approve that. No, this is, this is Mike.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Please, please proceed.
Okay, I move to approve minutes from the regular meeting, October 6th and October 20th, 2021.
Thank you, Michael. Is there a second for that?
Well, shouldn't it be subject to the change of do one public comment in favor versus in opposition of the project?
Sure, Guido, can we make sure that that's added, please? And will it prove it?
I'll have to double check the video, but absolutely, we can make that correction.
Okay, so with that correction, David, would you want a second?
Then I would second, yeah.
Well, sorry, this is Eric Rama Christian, Deputy City Attorney stepping in. Are we, is there any doubt as to the correction? If there is, can we, we can always approve the minutes on another meeting.
Yeah, I have no doubt, only because it's a real estate agent and I know who she is.
Okay.
And I remember her saying that. But if we need to have that confirmed, then that's fine.
Guido wants to confirm it and then do it for next time.
The motion can be to approve and direct staff to verify the comment that was brought up tonight. And I can certainly do that tomorrow, so.
Okay, so.
Michael, do you want to try the, try the most second time?
I'll try again, okay. I move to approve minutes from October, meeting minutes from October 6th and October 20th, 2021, with the staff to verify and confirm the correction.
A second.
Thanks, David. So then we'll just call the, call the roll. Jude?
Hi, yes.
Thank you, David.
Hi, yes.
Michael?
Hi.
Frank, yes, so approved, minutes approved for October 6th and October 20th, 2021, subject to Guido making the change. Okay, so with that, we'll move into the discussion section first up, which is really the topic of the evening. SC 210026, 120 Coronado. Could we have a staff report, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Bishop and Commissioners. The project for tonight is a design review application for a new two-story, single-family house. The project includes 3,584 square feet at the first story, 1,627 square feet at the second story, and a 3,584 square foot basement. The subject property is located on Coronado Avenue between Cherry Avenue and Garland Way. The neighborhood is considered to be a consistent character neighborhood as defined in the city's residential design guidelines. The characteristics of the neighborhood are derived from a similar style and street scheme characteristic staff believes is found in the neighborhood. Homes in the immediate neighborhood context are primarily one-story with, with two, two-story homes at 119 Coronado and 258 Cherry Avenue. The common materials found in the neighborhood include stucco, board and bad siding, wood trim accents. Roofums forms are mostly intermittently pitched or low pitched gable and hip roofs with composition shingle. And the residents of the neighborhood do have a lower scale horizontal eve lines with lower wall plates that are between eight to nine feet in height, and garages that are oriented towards a public right of way. The house that's for tonight is designed to be consistent with the development standards of the R110 district. There are two light wells that are located on the left side and right side of the structure. And those do comply with the R110 standards that permit a five-foot minimum setback for light wells from property lines. Kind of shifted, I guess, somehow. Let me try to get that. The project is a two-story structure with a basement, that the basement level is a rec room, entertainment room, two bedrooms, an office and three bedrooms, with again, two light wells along the left and right side, or east and west side of the structure. At the first story, there is a covered projecting porch located here, leading to a formal entry with the garage on the right side of the structure and a bedroom at the left side of the structure. Also is a living room immediately adjacent to the entry. Along the rear of the house is a family room, kitchen, mudroom, bathroom and bedroom oriented towards the rear. Again, light wells are located along the sides of the house facing the site property lines. At the second story, there are two bedrooms facing, facing Coronado with a bathroom also oriented towards Coronado. A stairwell is located along the right side of the property and bedroom, bathroom number two is located along the left. And then the master bedroom, master bath and closet area are located along the rear and right side of the structure. The house's overall proposed architecture is changing from a more ranch-style one-house, one-story house to a more modern farmhouse architectural style consisting of a mixture of hipped and gabled moderately pitched roofs. The roof, like many modern farmhouse designs, Los Altos, is proposing a standing c metal roof that is compatible, staff believes, with the existing neighborhood roof materials that are high quality in nature. While there are no modern farmhouse-style houses in the immediate vicinity, the architecture uses the board and batten siding style to help stop in the transition of the architectural styles by using, using vertical siding in a manner consistent with other homes in the neighborhood. The front elevation contains two accent gables that protrude from the secondary roof. The rear elevation includes an expansive first-story glass door, glass door and window openings that enter onto a covered porch. The overall form of the structure is simplistic with exceptions of the covered porch spaces. The project staff believes does a good job of integrating the hipped and gabled roof forms and projecting entry porch with the shed roof to be integrated, an integrated design. The material is available on sheet A12. Materials, of course, include standing c metal roof, cement board and vertical siding, aluminum wood clad windows and wood trim. According to the residential design guidelines, a house should fit into a lot, should not result in a home that stands out in a neighborhood. The project as designed is proposing a 10-foot first-floor wall plate with nine-foot second-story wall plates. The proposed 10-foot wall plate, staff believes, is not consistent with the eight-to-nine-foot plates of existing residences found in the neighborhood. Staff believes it contrasts with the immediate neighborhood context, which does have lower and more consistent wall plates. And staff does believe that the proposed 10-foot first-floor wall plates have created a more vertical and bulky emphasis inconsistent with the lower scale massing of adjacent homes. The residential design guidelines provide mitigation measures to help reduce perceptions of bulk. That includes changing the size of the house, reducing second-story plate heights or first-story plate heights, avoiding designing from the inside out, eliminating two-story walls. Staff does believe that we can meet the findings and staff is recommending a condition number three. The recommendation is to, in order to minimize bulk and scale and promote appropriate relationships to the adjacent houses, the project shall be revised to reduce the first-floor plate from 10 feet to nine feet, six inches. The project includes an accessory dwelling unit along the rear of the property. It is an 800 square foot ADU. However, it is not part of this designer view application. This is the materials board that's provided in, on sheet A12. It does, again, convey all the materials that were discussed previously. The applicant is, there are 11 trees on the property and the applicant is proposing to remove six of the 11 trees with the designer view application. The applicant proposes to remove the six trees, which include a cedar tree number two, which is located in the front due to poor form, a cedar tree number three located in the front, again, due to poor form or proximity to, to utility wires, a cedar tree number four, which is located also in the front yard due to being co-dominant with poor form, a coast redwood number six due to decay within the trunk that is located in the rear, a coast redwood number seven due, due to a dead lateral, a citrus, and a citrusy number nine. A previous tree removal permit was issued for a cedar dieter and Canary Island. And that is a separate permit that's already been approved previous to this application. Consistent with the tree removal criteria, staff does recommend removal of the dieter cedar number three in the front due to its poor form, proximity to utility lines. As conveyed in the Arbor Report, the tree has been topped, has very poor form, and it does conflict with utility lines along the frontage. It also, staff does support the removal of tree number six, which is located in the back. As conveyed in the Arbor Report, the tree does have, is in poor health, a significant decay within the trunk. And the Arborist and staff does recommend removal of that tree. Tree number nine, which is located here in the, in the back of the site, staff does recommend it due to poor structural form and it's potentially contributing to a high risk of limb failure. And that is also conveyed in the Arbor Report. Staff does not recommend the removal of cedar trees number two and four. While the applicant is requesting removal, staff does believe that the trees, as indicated in the Arbor Report, are in fair health. While the Arborist has indicated the trees have poor form due to multiple leaders or tree lean, the Arbor Report has not conveyed that the trees are either structurally unstable or potentially diseased. And furthermore, the Arbor Report did not substantiate any other reason consistent with the tree removal criteria to remove trees two and four. The cross redwood tree number seven is partially located on the neighboring property. And therefore, staff is not recommending removal without the consent of the neighbor. Staff recommends that the, that the Design Review Commission not approve the tree. We do have a standard condition that will allow the applicant to submit an application for tree removal. And at that time, staff can consider it based on the Arbor Report and the neighbor agreeing to the removal of that tree. A complete list of the trees are available on sheet A1. And attachment C is the Arbor Report. Arbor Report is also in sheet A21. But staff provided you a physical copy or a better sized copy because it's very difficult to read in the site plan. This is the Arbor Report on sheet A2.1. The applicant is proposing landscape screening along the side and rear property lines. Those include pisa porum, tenepholium. They will be installed 15 gallon. They do grow to a height of up to 20 feet and they do have a spread of 12 to 15 feet. Staff did also receive late correspondence from a Steve Katz. He requested that the applicant relocate his sprinkler system, pool, electrical and underground pool conduit due to the installation of new fencing. And he asked that the city require them to replace all the holly and pisa porum along the sides. As conveyed in my presentation, the applicant is proposing. But if the commission believes a more additional screening is necessary, then that can be a condition. We also received late correspondence from an Upin and Durga. They were concerned that trees one, two, three and four and 12 should not be removed. The staff would like to note that applicant, that tree number one is already being preserved. The applicant is not proposing removal. Tree number three, again, staff provided recommendations regarding its removal. Tree number four, staff is recommending preservation of the tree. And tree 12 is on a neighboring site and the applicant has not proposed any removal of tree 12. This concludes staff's presentations. Is there any questions? Thank you.
Okay, Sean, thank you for the nice report. With that, I guess we'll see if anyone from the commission has a question of Sean. So Jude, any questions?
Chair Bishop, before we jump into that, we should have done this at the outset. It's always best practice to get any ex parte communications on the record like we did at the last meeting. So if anybody has had any conversations outside of the meeting, they should disclose it for the record.
Okay, so that's a good point. So before we get into our discussion, has anyone met with owners or neighbors of this project? I guess this is the point where we should declare. So Jude?
Yes, I visited the site this morning and ran into Mr. Katz next door. And coincidentally, also ran into the neighbor directly across Mr. Upin. Sorry, I don't know his last name.
Okay, thank, thank you. David?
Yeah, I believe I ran into the owner's son at, at the property when I was there on Monday. He opened up the gate and let me in the back.
All right, thanks, David. Michael?
Yeah, same with Commissioner Blockus. I was there earlier today and ran into the owner's son, a young man, who helped me open the gate and show me around the yards.
Okay, thanks, Michael. This is Frank. I've had none. So I guess that will, that will cover that. Thanks for reminding us. And then we'll come back to Jude. The, the point here is, do we have any questions of Sean from the presentation?
Yes, I have many. And just to expand on that ex parte communication, the, the owner's son also opened the gate for me, but we only spoke briefly in passing.
All right, thank you.
So Sean, many question here. This project seems to, does the street have any special setback requirements? It seems that all the homes on this side of the street have 40-foot setbacks. It's evident on some of the drawings, aerial drawings.
No, but I can check, I can check again, of course.
Following in on that, I know you mentioned some of the ADU and our lack of ability to, to talk about that. But the ADU has bay windows that project into the required four-foot setback, which seems to be in violation of, you know, the ADU rules. Can you clarify that?
So setbacks are typically measured, and Guido could maybe speak to this too. Setbacks are typically measured off of the foundation itself to property line and is meeting the four-foot setback. 1466 also allows for an 18-inch protrusion of bay windows into setbacks. But we can always follow up with Guido, with the city attorney, to see if there's an interpretation. Again, that's being reviewed separately. But if, if, if we can always check with the city attorney to see if 1466 is applicable or whether we, that needs to be shifted to meet four-foot to the edge of the bay window?
Yeah, I, I think that would be prudent to do that, given that the setback requirements for ADU are so minimal. To have the ability to project further in seems to be not the intent of the code. Can you also clarify height measurement? The applicant has graded the project excessively down to a pad of 150.03, where the existing grade hovers around 151. I see numerous mentions of height of this project, anything from 25 plus or minus feet to as high as 27. And actually, by their pad measurements, I think they're in violation of the height of 27 feet. So can staff elaborate on that a little bit and clarify for us?
Well, the, what we got back from the applicant, and he can may speak to it also, is that the measurement for height was taken from natural grade. It does reflect both natural and finished. I can look again at the drawings and I can get back to you in a moment, I guess. But I could double check again, if you'd like. But, but, but the staff did require that when they provided the information that they showed measurement taken from the highest ridge line to the lowest natural grade below the ridge line, which is a requirement for the submitted requirements. But I can double check that to see if that's correct again.
So the town has no stipulation of whichever grade is higher or lower. Some cities, when you regrade, they measure the height from the, at the worst-case scenario. Los Altos does not have that rule?
Submitted requirements require measurement from the highest ridge to the lowest natural grade. If that's what it says.
All right, on sheet A2, the second sheet, there's a table with, for lot calculations that mentions landscaping breakdown, total landscape area, existing soft scape, new, new soft scape to be replaced. You see that table in the lower left corner?
Which, which sheets?
Would be the second sheet in the package. A 0.0.
Oh, okay.
You see that table there?
Yes, I see the table.
Yep, so. Well, first of all, is that a required calculation?
Which, which calculation are you referencing?
It's under lot calculations, lower left corner. It's net, net lot area of 12,037. Then it gives a confirmation of the front yard hardscape area being within the 50% limit?
Yes, the, the R110 section requires that 50% of the required front yard must be landscaped, permeable landscaping. So they're reflecting there that the total landscaped area or hardscape area is how they're doing in reverse is 42%, which means that 58% of the, of the front required yard is landscaped, which is consistent with the code.
Okay, I am, I'm not questioning those numbers. I'm questioning the numbers below, which gives a new soft scape, newer replaced landscape area at 6774. And I don't, I don't know how they derive that. First of all, is there any lot coverage requirements that they're not meeting?
No, sorry, my table is messing up. No, I mean, the lot coverage requirement for the site is 4,212. They're at 3,014.12, so they're substantially below the maximum lot coverage. The table for landscape breakdown is, is more intended for confirming whether the site may qualify or be required to comply with water efficient and regulate, water efficiency and landscaping standards. Because this is a new house, it automatically qualifies for water efficiency regulation. So then it would qualify. Other than that, it, there isn't any particular standard that utilizes these breakdowns except for water efficiency determinations.
Okay, well, my, my concern is there's a substantial amount of hardscape and there's nowhere near 6774 feet of hearts or a soft scape. It's more, it's probably more like a couple thousand square feet. So just kind of questioning what's the purpose of those numbers are?
So the city does not have a minimum percentage of landscaping for a site or the maximum hardscape required? The only factor that may come into is stormwater regulations, C3 stormwater requirements, and whether they can treat onsite water before it leaves the site to enter the stormwater system. And they have a, a grading, a drainage plan that does reflect that they can comply with the C3 requirements.
Okay, and two other questions, and sorry for the long question period here. One, is there any requirement on these applications to show required solar panel locations, given that the building code now requires solar?
No, no, I mean, that's a building permit submitted, but it's not on our plans and our submitted requirements do not require photovoltaic panels to be shown on the project plans.
Yeah, and, and my last question has to do with screening. Was there any concern of staff about side yard screening along the walkway edges on either side of the home, given that there's no, it's all hardscape and no planting area?
Let me look. I mean, I believe that they raised the sill heights to the minimum required sill heights that the commission traditionally requests, which is 46. So we, and typically, the pursuit is to reduce either bulk or address issues of privacy. We're trying to address the issue of bulk by asking for a reduction of plate height. And the privacy issue staff had believed that had been addressed by increasing the sill heights of the windows. So no, we didn't request additional screening.
Thanks, thanks, Sean.
Okay, thanks, Drew. Good questions. David, any questions for Sean on the staff report?
I had one, I'm not sure he can answer in regards to the neighbor's concern about where the wall is and the repairs or whatnot that they're asking for. And it's probably more a question for the neighbor. But what, you know, where are those? I looked over the fence when I was there and saw some water drip lines that kind of went along that side of the fence. But I didn't see anything else out of the ordinary. Were these pool equipment and all that there as an easement? If it was into the other yard or is it actually into the other yard? Because there isn't really, I tried to follow the lot line. And because you have the structure on the right, the garage and going back, you, you kind of got a feel for it, but not really the whole thing. So I just need, trying to get a better understanding for that. Do we have any understanding of that?
This is Steve Katz. If you're asking me a question, I can respond.
No, we're, we're gonna hold the public a little bit later, Steve. So just hold on that, okay?
Yeah, so maybe in that, in your response, he could respond to that. Other than that.
Commissioner Blockus, so when I'm looking at the grading and drainage plan, I, I'm not seeing any type of easements along the site property lines that grant any party access to use. Yeah, access or use of someone else's property in either direction. It doesn't, it doesn't indicate that. I'm gonna pull up the, I'm gonna pull up the. I'm gonna pull up the track map in a moment and I'll confirm all of that too again, just to double check.
Okay, but. We've confirmed everything as far as lot lines and all that are correct. And if the fence went up, it would be appropriately positioned. And so the other issues relative to. Where the drip lines and the pool equipment, et cetera, et cetera. Is is not infringing.
So traditionally with fences, I mean, this is part of an entitlement application. So of course. The placement of a fence typically it needs to be placed on the party's property unless there's a mutual agreement to having the fence on the property line. Typically, in non-development applications, offense firm, it's not required and it's a it's an issue that needs to be resolved between two owners. But the at the neighbor can probably raise some of their issues and discuss that more thoroughly than I understand it.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Okay, anything else, David? David?
No, sorry, I'm I'm working left handed here, so I'm not. Not doing too well with the right handed mouse.
All right, we'll go easy on you tonight.
All right, thank you.
You bet. Michael, any any questions for staff?
Yeah, I got one question for Sean. Sheet A2.2, where's the tree removal permit show? My question is that I know they they apply for the tree removal for two tree. One cedar cedar and the other one is a pine. So how many replacement tree I I noticed only one. So I just want to find out from Sean, is the city's rule, is it discretionary? To the city's staff, how many or is this is one one replacement per one remove? I just want to know more about the city's requirement and rules for replacement tree.
So so the tree preservation regulations does not stipulate. The number of trees that are required. I think there are a number of factors that staff looks at when they're looking at tree replacements. Sometimes the consideration of the type of tree. If a site is heavily planted with trees. Then then there are many times where a one for one isn't required. Typically, if it's not heavily forested, then a one for one replacement is required. If if the tree is a tree of tremendous significance, which in this community appears to be oak trees. And Cypress tree sometimes and redwood trees, then many times it is a one for one replacement. I wasn't involved in this application, but. This site appears to be, you know, the site is. Pretty forested at the time when they were looking at it, and so they probably thought. One additional tree may be very problematic if they were to do a full two replacement since they are somewhat. Intermixed with each other, which for good forestry practices, we try to have a reasonable spread amongst trees.
I see. All right. Thank you, Sean.
Okay, great. Thanks, Michael. So at this point, we'll we'll move over to the owner or the architect and the architect for a presentation. Do you have something you'd like to present to us this evening?
Sure. Hi, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Sheriff, for the time. I I I'd be happy to share some of the some of the notes that we have. Taken during the process of designing this project and I'd be happy to have Jerry also to speak as the owner. For some of the some of the challenges here on site for for the trees that were discussed. So I'm going to share my screen if I have your permission.
Yes, go ahead. Great, thank you.
Okay, so. In front of us is the project that the the commissioners have seen and the neighbors are aware of on 120 Coronado. This on the top here shows the existing residence, which is not in great shape and it's. Something too well. So we're presenting a new project, two story, modern farmhouse style consistent with the design. That is sought after and appreciated in the city of Los Altos quite a bit. So. We are taking that. Approach to designing this project. Granted that there was not, as Sean mentioned. Not as many of these projects in the neighborhood, in the immediate neighborhood, but they are. Quite visible in the fabric of the town, city of Los Altos. And location and we're we're not directly into the corner, but we're near near the corner, so we do have some visibility and so. We do take great care into making this project as nice as we can so that we have an appearance that's. Kind of worthy of this beautiful. City of Los Altos in its kind of quaint neighborhood. Next is the the context that you you've seen in the in the city of the in in a plan submitted from. Plan submitted by and then shown by Sean earlier. Across from us, there is at 119 is a modern house. Which in a in a sense is around the same scale and width a little bit wider than us, so. In terms of mass, we are trying to keep within. Within the size and scale of the of the residences that are either coming or newly built. Of the newer newer structures, most of the residences that are in this neighborhood shown are a little bit older, so. What you will see is kind of the increased bulk as people start to develop these properties that are a little bit older. So. The two, the only two story projects that are on this specific plan is the 120 and then 119. Is the cross from us that's recently built, so. We propose the same similar scale as the neighbor next in front of us, so. There were a few comments regarding trees. I think Sean and I went back and forth a couple of times regarding these. The tree number five and to to number five is to be protected. And so we actually changed the design in order to keep the tree number five. It was originally going to, the applicant was trying to remove that, but we are. We are keeping it and change the design slightly on the rear of the property and the the location of the AD was redesigned in order to have that be preserved. This is the sectional cuts through the balconies. As you can see, it's very minimal balcony in order to preserve privacy of the neighbors and and the future. Future owners of the. Or the the current owners of the project. Wall plate heights. So as as discussed with Sean, we are actually going to provide a closed eve design where we are not going to have 10 foot plates perceived. We will have nine foot four plates on the first floor and about eight foot four, eight foot five plates on the second floor. And eight foot six plates on the right side. So essentially we have a changing. Wall plate height in order to reduce mass and. As as the way the project is perceived, we would be looking at a nine foot four plate rather than a 10 foot plate. Albeit that the interior wall plate height would be 10. We are not proposing a 10 foot wall plate that's visible from the outside, from the from the exterior of the building, you will only see a nine foot four. Which is, which would be the same as if you were to have a nine foot six plate. So this is kind of what discussion we had with the with staff and so. Would like to present and keep this nine foot four as the perceived plates rather than reducing the height because of the quality that it. Quality of life that it will present to the owners. It will be a lot. Nicer and kind of deserving of this neighborhood. So this is the some existing pictures of the current lot. The materials, as discussed by Sean, we are going to have kind of glass. An aluminum door garage door with translucent or frosted glass. And so that it's not see through dark finished window trims and wood, white wood trim windows. Around them, so we'll have. Cement boards and cement board and hardie backer as the base and vertical wood sightings for. For the hardie bad hardie backer and and more than button exterior finish, the material of the roof will be, as discussed earlier, will be. This charcoal gray standing seam metal roof consistent with the style of modern farmhouse. The dormers are provider are provided in order to kind of break up the mass of the house and we will add some additional character to the design, which is consistent with also. With the. With the design of the style of home. Then I think, yes, that's the that's about it. Jerry, did you want to add anything else while we are on this topic?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jerry Quark. I'm the owner of 120 Coronado. Basically, Sean already presented the staff. I mean, review information and our architect Sala. Introduces the basic design ideas and elements that will present on this new project. Basically, we bought this house in April, as all the neighbors are aware. When we bought it, this house was in a very poor condition and we tended to build a new house since day one. We have three children for over six months since we bought this property. We're so excited about the new house and we intended to live there. Here, I would like to thank all the city staffs who have been working on this project. And I also would like to thank all the. Commissioners. I really, really would like, I mean, look forward to your support from the. Review, design review commissioners. In regards to the neighbors concern, I'm glad to let to let you know that, you know, we pretty much established a pretty constructive. Communication with our neighbors, especially the our right hand side neighbor. Steve Katz and Ellen Katz, and we have several communications. Including the discussions about the fence yesterday, we met our fence contractors. And we set up, you know, agreement. I mean, we basically agreed with each other about how the fence needs to be. Installed and you know, what's, you know. A Steve and Alan's concerns that needs to be addressed. So we have multiple communications and to to reach, I mean, each others, you know. If there's any concerns or any 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 questions, so that I'm glad that we have this such a constructive communication with the neighbors. I I do aware there that the neighbors is, you know, the the tree concerns and. I would say we have been doing as best as we can to preserve trees on the site. My opinion is that when it comes to the question of whether or not a tree needs to be removed. We better to first. Respect the professional reports instead of the personal judgment. There are cases when some neighbor stated some tree on other people's property. Seems like healthy, but when you check the office report and the tree ends up not being healthy and has serious potential safety hazards. So in this case is that, you know. A second, we're better to check the city's tree removal criteria on the city's document. Tree removal permit process, these are explicit, they're explicit. Criteria that city will follow to determine if a tree needs to be removed. So I strongly suggest that the neighbor who would like to show their personal preferences. Please show respect to the professional viewpoint as well and show respect to the established the city codes and rules. I just wanted to remind the neighbors that. The codes and guidelines set up by the city are based upon long time professional researchers and studies rather than personal preferences. So I think that's this is pretty much what I want to. To talk and but I I I'm open to any, you know, concerns or any questions from the neighbors or the commissioners.
Okay, great. So thank you. To both the architect and the and the owner for the presentation and for the commentary that that went with that. So with this, I think the commissioners do have questions, so we'll work back through our list. Back up to the top, Jude, do you have a question or two for the for the architect or the or the owner?
Well, Sean's waving for some reason.
I can't, I can't see you, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're waving.
I didn't want to.
Did you want to, did you want to come back with an answer before we move forward?
Yes, please. So I did, I did check the county and I checked the city's records regarding track maps. There's not a track map for this neighborhood. However, I did check adjoining parcels that have had parcel maps. And there is not a 40 foot setback or a setback that's established that creates an easement, which is very common in the city where you have setback lines that convert to easements. And we have none of that. That would anyway be a 40 foot or 30 or 20 foot easement. We have. No easements along frontages on that section of the street than I can tell. Based on the county's records.
All right, Sean. Sorry, I couldn't couldn't see you there.
That's what I'm here for.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, Jude. So back back to you, Jude. Any questions for the architect or the owner?
Oh, sure. A couple, couple of design related in terms of the fenestration on the home. The designer, I think it's a designer, correct? You're showing numerous mutton bars, quite a busy window breakup. In a modern farmhouse would have a fraction of these muttons. Can you talk me through what you're doing there?
Sorry, can I find my mute button? So essentially, the this style is consistent with the the desired outcome of what the owners liked. And so we try to give the the owners kind of like what they desire, what they like in terms of, as long as it's consistent with the city's skyline and. The mullions shown on these on these windows are kind of factory standard, so we just download the models and they they provide them for us, so we can. I mean, that's that's kind of consistent with the style that the owners wanted. So if we, if they agree and they want to reduce those, that's kind of what we can, we can reduce those. That's not a problem. On my end, but.
Okay, and another question for you. You show five dormers on the home. You talked a little bit about breaking up mass. Do the dormers. True, good design has purpose and intent.
Right.
What is the intent of the dormers functionally? Do they serve purpose in the attic?
Essentially, there they, as you mentioned, we have designed these dormers and. Kind of these forms in order to break up the space on the attic. So if you imagine these. Just a flat roof or like a sloped roof. It would, it would kind of be a massive, just black. Presence of the the metal standing seam roof. So in order to get away from that and reduce the mass and bulk. We we add these characteristic elements in order to change that. That perception of space on 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 the size of the house. So. When when you have these elements introduced, you can, you can break up the space on, we only have two in the front and three in the rear. To be kind of consistent in that style with the front and rear of our project, so.
Okay, well, following your logic on the windows, would the garage doors not have a similar breakup?
It, we tried to add some more, but it it became a little bit much when you have too many, like it's, it seems to be that. It's it only works when it's like on the upper level and and you can see like in the in this style of home, it's mostly like. Mostly shown and mostly designed in this way that it's on the upper levels and not on the first floor.
Okay. And I guess a question for the owner. Is there the the product or the neighbor next door at 108? Is, has there been any discussion or correspondence or is there anything on that property that is relevant to this project that you might want to discuss?
Well, actually, 108 has been sold and we bought the 108 as well.
Okay. So what is the intent for 108 and how does it relate to this project? And can we see those drawings tonight?
We also submitted the design review and it's under, under review and we're waiting for the first round of comments from city staff, Stephen Golden.
Is the, is the home similar to this home?
I would say, it hard to say it's similar depending on, you know, what's, what's the, what's the, you know, criteria when you define a similar, but I guess you're asking why we don't, whether or not we receive any feedback or anything from 108 is what my answer is that so far. I mean, there's no, no, no feedback.
Okay. And are you the, are you the end user of this home? Will you be living in this home next year or two years from now?
This is what our intention.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Jude, that was your last question?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Over to you, David. Any, any questions for the designer or for the owner?
No, I have none.
Okay, thank you. Michael, any questions?
Yes. Yeah, I have a few, either the designer or the homeowner can answer. The, I'm just curious, the porch, the entry porch of the house, I mean, it seems like this is some kind of symmetry, but the entries kind of shift to the left. I mean, a few feet, they can be lined up. I just want to hear if that's intentional or is this something that, that the designer have any other special thoughts about that?
So in essence, I don't know about Jerry, but I personally think that's when architecturally symmetry will kind of mess with things. And if there's, if there's an exact symmetry like on the, on the entire element, then everything needs to be symmetrical. But we don't believe that it needs to be symmetrical. We think that having this asymmetric entrance, entry element creates an additional character. And I think at some point, Jerry, we had some kind of the, what is called like a symmetrical entrance with a gable form, which did not look as good as, as what we have right now. And I think this asymmetrical front entry elevation will work better with, with the design of the home as the kind of this flat roof, kind of one single slope shed style roof will work better when we have this type of form, kind of breaking up this center front elevation.
Okay, all right, thanks. Yeah, so actually I was talking about symmetry and then not lining up, but that's fine. That's, that's, that's still a minor item. So since you bring up about the roof, I also question, I noticed two, actually two or three different roof pitches. The second floor has a different pitch from the ground floor roof generally. I believe five to 12 compared to four and a half to 12. I just curious, I'm also curious about the reason for that.
So the only true reason is windows. Essentially, like if we had the higher, we wanted to match the five, but once we make the five, it would hit the windows and they would then meet egress if I do that. So if, so that's, that's the main reason why we made it slightly lower on the first floor than on the second.
I see, I see. Okay. And then the, can you quickly let me know, because the, I know Sean talked about the side window sill height, the second floor side window sill height, but can you quickly, because there's no dimension on the drawing on the elevation usually, you know, for privacy. Can you quickly give us the floor to sill height, to the window sill height on the second floor for the side? Yes. Oh, those are on the drawing. Okay. Okay, somehow I may be looking, okay, got it. Okay. All right.
Yeah, they're all on the sides, especially they're all above four and a half.
Okay, got it. Okay. Let me see, one last question about the tree. Either you or the owner can answer. Tree number one, the large, the redwood is going to stay. And if you look at A 2.2, the site plan with all the tree, I see the tree canopy is overlapping quite a few feet with the corner of the house into the basement. The basement is always the ground floor. Has the arborists, it's been discussed with the arborists about this because usually the canopy will be the same side of the tree zone. So I just want to see if this has been brought up by the arborists. I don't see that any discussion on the arborist's report. So I just want to see if you or the owner has anything to say about that.
So we can, essentially, once, once approved, when we're removing these trees, essentially, once we have everything in order, we, we will consult them in order to make sure that what we are doing is in consistency with the way we can protect the tree, if the tree is to be protected. So tree number one. Tree number one, being here, we have done projects before where we were getting close to the root system and we would consult them prior to excavation in order to make sure that what we're doing is okay. And sometimes they actually come and visit the site and tell us exactly what they need us to do in order to excavate in a way that will not harm the tree. But yeah, the excavation this close can, can work. As you can see, the tree protection, what I have drawn is at this corner here, but that's, that's under the condition that tree number four is also approved for removal.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Yeah.
Yeah, tree number four is greatly leaning on the house as it is. That's why it's recommended to be removed as well.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Michael. So this is Frank. I have a question. I'm just a little confused, so maybe the designer can help me with this one. So in the, in the staff report, the city was asking for reduction in the plate height of the first and the second story. They are quite high as described. And then in the conversation tonight, I was unclear as to whether the plate heights have been reduced or not. Could you just give me a definitive answer on that, both for the first and for the second story, please?
So for the second floor, yes. We have reduced the floor, the wall plate height from nine that was previously and to bring it down in the front of the project to eight and a half and eight foot five. I'm looking for the drawing I had indicated those here.
And the first floor?
First floor. So here's the thing I was trying to point out to, this is the wall plate perceived from the exterior of the building. We have closed wall plates, so the eaves are closed at nine foot four, which will be essentially the, what the wall plate would be perceived at, nine foot four. The interior.
What is the, what, I'm asking, what is the actual? So you haven't changed it?
Not on the first floor.
That's all I'm asking. Okay, thank you. All right. All right. So Guido, over to, over to you. I believe we do have some comments from neighbors in the public. So could you please organize that and, and have them have their three minutes to present?
Absolutely, absolutely. Let me, let me start from the bottom.
Thank you.
Last four as being seven, three, four, two. Did you want to speak on this item? Seven, three, four, two. Did you want to speak on this item? Nope. Okay. And next up is Upen 119 Coronado. Would you like to speak on this item?
Sure, yeah. How much time do I have?
You have three minutes.
Okay, can I share my screen?
Sure.
Just quick.
Okay. Go ahead.
Can you see my screen?
I can see me.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's what I'm doing. So I actually have two comments. One is regarding the height of the, the whole overall height. I see that the overall height is 25 feet, which I think is a little bit higher, overall higher for this, this neighborhood. And I also see that, you know, they have this two things in the, in the middle. I believe these are like the story windows. I feel that kind of contributes to the overall bulk of the house. Like if you see this, this is what I'm trying to point to this area, you know, those two things. I feel if, if the, you know, if they can go down a little bit so they kind of softens the bulkness of the building and probably even the trees, keeping the trees would also soften the, you know, the overall bulkness of the building. And also just want to correct that, you know, the elevation across the, how the elevation for the cross house is not the one that is in the, is in the presentation. It is this one. We can have, we don't have any vertical elements and also we try to keep the overall height of the building at 23 feet so that, you know, it doesn't cause excessive bulkness. And going back to the tree comment by the owner, I am for whatever the city says or whatever the arborist says, let's keep, let's take out those trees which are unhealthy and which are healthy. We, I strongly urge the owner to keep the trees because they add value to the property as well as they have given some privacy and also reduce the bulkness of the building. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, we have Steve, Steve Katz. Did you want to speak today?
Yes, I would like to speak tonight. So I just wanted to clarify, I want to thank Sean for, for mentioning my correspondence. I'd like to clarify it. His summary wasn't exact. The owner, Jerry Quark, and I have been talking and Jerry's been very forthcoming. We verbally agreed to put a fence along the entire property line that separates our two properties. To put it in context, my house and the house next door were built around 1940 and the detached garage at 120 Coronado is about one foot or so from the property line. And so the wall of that garage actually acts as a fence to our property. There is no fence there today. So we have had the use of that side of the property for 35 years. And we have installed along the side of that property where that detached garage will be demolished, an in-ground watering system and there are some electrical conduits there that supply water to the pool, well, water conduits as well as electrical conduits for the pool. What we agreed was that we would share the cost of a new redwood fence that would go along where the property line will be determined by Jerry's surveyor. And what I mentioned in that correspondence was an expectation that should the watering system have to be moved somewhat to accommodate the use case with the new fence goes up, Jerry's arrest already asked his fence contractor to help with that move and I was simply confirming that. And the one new thing that I mentioned was that my expectation is that when they do the excavation for the ADU foundation and when they demolish the garage, there's a possibility, and it's just a possibility, that the holly trees, there are five holly trees and three pittusporum that go along and separate our properties, they're right by the side of that garage, that should those trees die as a result of the roots being severely damaged, that we would hope that there would be something agreed that if they died within a short period of time, that those trees would be replaced. And I just wanted to clarify that. And I'm sure that Jerry and I can work that out because we've had a pretty good relationship so far in terms of being able to work through potential issues. Thank you.
This is Ellen. I just, may I ask just one quick question? Can I have a moment? Is that all right? I can't see on the plans where the pool equipment or the ADU air conditioning equipment will be. Is that something that will be put on the plans at some point? What, what do you do with that? Can anybody answer that question?
All right, I can jump in if you don't mind, Ellen. Nice, nice meeting you here. So.
So real quick, everybody, just so we can set the table correctly. Right now, we're giving three minutes to each person. And if Salaar and the design team want at the end to rebuttal, that's fine. They have five minutes, but right now we're taking three minutes of comment per person. Steve Katz and it looks like somebody on Steve Katz's line is also, but Salaar, if you could just hold off in terms of any comments, because right now we're trying to get all the comments and then you guys, under the Los Altos Commission handbook rules, have five-minute rebuttal. Okay? So Chair Bishop, would you like me to have Mr. Katz's other person speak for three minutes or that's your call as the chair?
I, I think it's three minutes per line is the way we've set this up. So, so let's, let's hold on that. We'll give, we'll give the owner and the designer a chance to answer back about, I think the ADU is not actually part of this discussion tonight, but perhaps the pool equipment location could be, could be discussed at the proper time. So let's just hold for that and move on to the next.
Just to jump in, under the Brown Act, anybody attending the meeting, and we have to sort of pretend that we're all in person together in the council chamber, gets a chance to speak if they want to.
I thought we were, okay, well, that's different than what we were told, but that's fine. So if, if the other person on Mr. Katz's line would like to have three minutes, we will give you three minutes.
Well, that's very sweet of you. The other person is his wife of 47 years, Ellen, and I've asked my questions and I understand if you cannot tell me where the air conditioning unit is going to be for the ADU, but if you can answer the question about the pool equipment, that would be great. And thank you for the extra.
Yeah, sure. And we'll, we'll try to get back to that shortly. Yeah, thank you. Okay. And thank you to the city attorney as well. So Guido, did we have other people this evening?
Absolutely, yeah, we have still more. So.
Okay.
A SMG 960U. I'm not sure who that is, but you have three minutes. SMG 960U. Okay, moving on. And Jerry already spoke. I don't believe Hetal wants to speak, but I will ask her, Hetal, did you want to speak on this item? Okay, moving on. We have Dee. Dee, did you want to speak tonight? Okay, moving on. And I believe Ellen spoke, but I just wanted to double check before. Nope. And Kathleen Bendler, would you like to speak tonight?
Yes, I actually have just a couple of comments and a question or two. I, but I'm on Cherry Avenue and I about the back of the 120 Coronado. I'm a bit confused on the, and I agree, we're not discussing the ADU, but if you could just clarify for the moment, which side, is it the west side or the east side of the property will the ADU be? I mean, I might, I have two different plans here and I don't know which one is current. So that's my first question because it's relevant to my, my actual comment, which has to do yet again with the trees. I understand the arborist's concern about the tree number nine, I think it is, the the diadar cedar in the back, since the diadar cedar and the pine tree are actually pretty much the closest to my property. They actually concern me. And I understand the arborist's concerns about the diadar, but I don't quite. But I don't quite understand why, and I certainly never saw any indication given to me. Maybe I wasn't looking for it about any discussion about the removal of the pine tree. So I'm still not sure why the pine tree has to go. And the arborist had a the arborist's comment on it was a fairly vague sort of, well, when we take the diadar out, it might make the pine tree weak, which seems pretty vague to me. So and I don't see that there's any structure is actually going to be built on the pine tree. True, it seems to be next to the pool. But anyway, I'd just like I'd like some I'd like some better rationale for the removal of that particular tree. Mostly because it's an amenity to my property. Other than that, and my question about the setback of the second-story balcony on the house, which I cannot there's a possible privacy issue until the pitasporum hedge grows up whenever that might be. So those are my two issues that I'd like the most of it has to do with landscaping mostly that I would like to get an answer to. And of course, the air conditioner and the pool pump, the pool equipment, which will be very close to my property. My, you know, to my patio in the back, and I'd like to know about any mitigation on sound for either of those. So that's pretty much my questions I have for the designer.
Okay, thank you. We'll try to get an answer in a moment on a number of those issues. Guido, is there another party?
I believe that's it, Chair Bishop.
Okay, so at this point, we will close the public comment section of the meeting. And I'm not exactly sure how we're going to handle this. We were going to go into the commissioner discussion. Usually, we don't get questions from the public specific like this, but I'm going to ask a couple. I'm going to ask the so everyone listening, I'm going to ask Guido or Sean. I think some of this can be addressed directly from the city, which has to do with the noise of pool equipment and air conditioners. There are actual standards for these things. And it's more on the the sound decibel side than it necessarily is specific location, but there could be a setback required on that, too. So could the city please comment on a couple of those questions? And then we're going to move over a couple more questions. I think we're going to end up back actually with the with the designer and the owner for some of them. But there's some basic ones here I think we can address as far as mechanics. And ADU is just for the public. ADU is a bit different here at the DRC. We don't deal with that typically in our meetings. And it has to do with a whole host of state requirements and laws and so forth. But I think we can talk a little bit about where the ADU is relative to east and west. I think the city can answer that. I think we can also answer a question on at least the noise levels of air conditioning units and pool equipment. So Guido, could you try to tackle a couple of those right here?
And just to confirm, I'm sorry, Chair Bishop for jumping in, but you are planning on giving the applicant five minutes to rebut, correct?
I will, yes, but I thought we could take a few of these off the table because I think they're just their known facts. So, yeah.
That's fine. I just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Yep, they'll be up next. So let's see if we can get the thank you for that. If we can just get a bit of feedback from the city on a couple of these ADU location and noise noise level of pool and air conditioning equipment, please.
Sean, I have it up on the screen. But for the benefit of Chair Bishop, do you want to walk him through our AC?
Can you just do it verbally? I think I know the answer, but I'll be happy to listen. Yep, please.
Sure. So so air conditioners air conditioners setback are based on the decimal rating of the unit. Many times not until at time of building permit submitted, we will have an actual model provided to us. At time of building submitted, we will require the applicant to provide a specification sheets that confirm the decimal rating of the unit. And as long as they comply with these setbacks based on the desperate rating, based on a previous study conducted by the city. As long as it meets the parameters where there's one reflective wall and an interceding fence, and it meets the setback. Then staff has determined that it will comply with the city's noise ordinance. In regards to the pool at, you know, pools don't require a development permit or land use permit. It's a straight building permit. So pools do require a minimum five-foot setback. They need to be pool equipment specifically pumps need to be enclosed in an enclosure. It has to have a roof and it has to have walls. And and as long as it's enclosed within that there isn't specific standards per se as the air conditioner standards, as long as it's in an enclosed structure and it means it is fully enclosed. Then then it does meet the standards. Now, if we receive a complaint from a neighbor or resident regarding potential concern, of course, that is a code enforcement case. And it doesn't matter when the pool is installed, they will be required to comply with the city's noise regulations and the potential impact to neighbors. In regards to the pine tree, the pine tree is already approved. I'm sorry to say it was approved by another planner under a previous tree removal permit. It was approved in May 2012. And what they're indicating is they removed it due to disease. And they've approved both the both the both the diador cedar tree and a Canary Island palm tree. And the expiration period for appeals expired on that. And in regards to the location of the ADU, when it this was first submitted to the city and the applicant may be looking at a previous middle for the first middle. My understanding is that the ADU was on the left side of the property. Staff was concerned that they were removing too many trees. And we advised them they needed to move the ADU. So they flipped it to the other side. And so now it's on the right side of the property along the rear. And that is the location of the ADU per the plans today that were that DRC are reviewing.
I think that's right. Okay. All right. Thank you, Sean, for those answers. And as the city attorney mentioned, we will give the owner and the designer five minutes to discuss or rebut anything that was brought to their attention by the public.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, neighbors, for bringing up your concerns. So in regards to the dormers from the 119 neighbor open, we we do realize that they are an additional forum, but they actually do break up the space in order to make it a more kind of it's not one bulk so that they break up the space. Additionally, the trees that were asked being asked to be removed were trees that were not doing so well and not a great condition. So what what we're proposing is not based based on the recommendations of the arborists. So we preserve your number five in order to achieve that and the preserve number one to achieve that as well. So having that said, that go, let's go to, I think, Mr. Cox's concern regarding fence has been discussed with the owner Jerry and they were they have reached an verbal agreement. So the regarding Kathleen's comment, if I can quickly share my screen, I can address her concern. So if you look at page eight, two, I believe it's sheet four of the drawings that you guys have in front of you. The AC is a very small dockless system for the ADU that's located on the north of the ADU, which is more than seven feet away from the property lines. The pool equipment, depending on the mechanical system design when when we're doing the building permit. So that will either be on the right side within the required setbacks as well, or it could be here on the landing portion of the ADU. So that it's it's far farther than required distance away from the property lines. Regarding if I'm missing anything. I don't know if I'm missing any of the concerns here. Jerry, did you have anything else you would like to add?
Yes, and I just want to add all cats families' concerns and issues. I think I will. I'll continue our constructive communication and to figure the concerns out. And we can we can meet, you know, more times or, you know, to to get everything in details and to make you guys happy. Yeah, that's that's pretty much what I want to add.
Okay, is there is there anything else from the owner or designer, or can we conclude the portion of the rebuttal?
I do not have anything else to add. As Sean mentioned, the tree number nine and 10 have already been approved for removal. And we are doing everything we can in order to keep the present there as many trees as we can on site. If there's any other questions, I'd be otherwise I would yield back my time. Thank you.
Okay, that's great. Thank you so much. All right. Wow, coming back now to the discussion with the commission. Jude, do you want to kick off the discussion tonight?
You really want me to?
Yes, I do. Actually, I would like you to go first, please.
Okay, so I my commentary is going to be on a couple of levels. One, and it first of all, we see quite a few homes like this go into neighbor who have been underdeveloped over the years. We did review and approve the house directly across the street. But there was likely discussions on that home. And I think we were successful. And I think the homeowner is quite happy with the final outcome of the design. It is a two-story home on a street that is virtually one story. And it's integrated well, given its setback and its scale and its height. It's only 23 feet. This home is different. First of all, on the other side of the street, Coronado, there are predominantly 40-foot setbacks all along the edges or along that side, and specifically on either either side of the adjacent properties. By bringing this home 15 feet closer to the street and creating a two-story residence, it will have immense impact on the character of the neighborhood. And when you couple that with removal of substantial heritage trees, its presence will be immense and will dramatically change the character of Coronado forever. I don't know what's happening next door, but I think we need to at least flush that out. Because I think there's things indicating that there will be a similar home, a similar scale on that property. And I think this is setting a bad precedence just in terms of site planning for the approvals. The the architecture itself is workable. I think we can make some recommendations in terms of eliminating dormers, simplifying the fenestration pattern, specifically the mutton bars, adjusting some of the roof pitches for other comments. And cleaning up some of the peculiarities of the front entrance. But going beyond that, my real concern is the design guidelines and the findings talk about minimizing impact on the the property regarding trees and soil and whatnot. And what I think hasn't been reviewed quite clearly is what's happening at the back of the property, where the grade is being lowered up to two and a half feet. So the fences that we're talking about building are going to be built on top of retaining walls. So my concern is what those the impact of the retaining walls are going to be on the neighbors' properties, both Mr. Katz's and the the neighbor directly behind on Cherry. One, because there is vegetation that by digging out two and a half feet of soil will dramatically affect the root structure. Coincidentally, there is no fence line or retaining walls shown on the 108 property side. So I think this pattern is going to continue up onto those properties. So there is at this point further review that because I don't think we can make any findings, specifically finding number B, height and placement of the site, the proposed additions, as well as C, the natural landscape will preserve in as far as practical by minimizing tree and soil removal. Or three, general architectural considerations, including the character, size and scale and the quality of design. So at this high level, I don't think we can even start discussing that until we have some other answers on these issues. So I would like to see this project continued with further examination of the grading aspect, the the impact on the trees, the impact on the neighbor. And with all the tree removals in front, I think one thing that's not going to be is not being considered is when you take out those diador cedars, that redwood is very one-sided. It's very lopsided up to 40 or 50 feet. There is going to be no trees. So it's probably going to be the ugliest redwood tree known to them known on the street. So I think we need to flush some things out before we take any action on this item.
Okay, all right, Jude. Thanks for the for the comments. David, you're up next.
Yeah, mine's not quite as detailed as Jude, but yeah, I look at it and just the size and mass, especially the first floor. The windows, I mean, the you combine all that, the front facing it, to me, it just looks massive. And I, too, would remove the dormers. I don't know what, if anything, need to be replaced. But that just to me adds and the windows in the front, you know, almost take out that the the top two rows or it's one window, but it looks like two with the the breakup of that. I would go to the tree and have the condition stay in on item number to 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 retain trees two and four. They're in good health. Well, not good health, but decent health. I don't think they necessarily need it to go out. I think it's more of a trying to make the house look better for resale. And those are my comments.
Thanks, David. Michael, comments?
All right. Yeah, I shared some of the comments with the other two commissioners. So basically, from the overall picture, is the compatibility, you know, excessive bulk and mass in detail for that. The the wall plates. I understand that designer talked about the the perceived wall play and the interior play. But from based on what I understand, there's only one technically. There's only one play height. You know, that's the the real the real play is. So I'm hoping to see some real reduction on the play height. The the entry, I may I may have used the wrong long term. I think it's more like alignment on the entry. The dormers, yeah, I agree with everybody. The dormance is kind of redundant. Eliminate that will make this that the look a lot cleaner and simple. The overall, the overall exterior design. I mean, I like the modern farmhouse concept from the beginning. However, the the entire exterior style and look is too complicated because the the dormers, the the window design, the window elements and the mountains, the grids, it's too complicated, you know, modern farmhouse design. You know, look at other modern farmhouse that we approved previously. The the window are very clean and simple. So that's how you make a modern farmhouse design. Looks good. The other one about the tree, I am very concerned about the tree. I mean, there are two, basically two, it's 10 large trees on site. And only two are going to remain. And you know, the arborist report I read a couple of times, some of them are very vague. Especially, you know, just for example, some of them are not addressed. The one I talked about before I brought up earlier, tree number one, that tree is to stay. However, there's a conflict with the building design being too close. So next time I would like to see the arborist how they address the root zone. I mean, I know the designer say that during the excavation that the arborist will come. the root zone. I mean, I know the designer say that during the excavation that the arbors will come. But during that time, we'd be too late. I mean, you either cut the root or stop construction and revise the design, come back to building department to revise the entire basement or house design. That'll be too late. So I would like to see a revised, updated, more precise arbors report to address that condition. For replacement tree, I mean, since you're removing so many trees, I would like to see a more substantial landscaping plan and tree replacement plan. I look at the landscaping plans, the last sheet, L1, I see some new landscaping, but most of the replacement or the new planting are five gallon and 15 gallon. I don't see any or much of the 24. I don't even, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't notice any 24, even 36 box trees. So that's that's all I have. And I would like to see this project come back. Thank you.
Okay, Michael, thanks for the the comments. I agree, Frank speaking here, I agree with with the commissioners who have have spoken. I mentioned actual wall plate heights earlier. The cities mentioned it, Michael mentioned it again. I I think it could be reduced to actually make the house less massive than it appears in what we've seen here tonight. Jude raised a number of other interesting questions and asked to have it continued. I think that's reasonable to do. And as I mentioned early before the meeting started, I'm actually a neighbor over on Solvian. And one of the although 500 feet away from this project, one of the things on Coronado that I've always, I walk the street often, is that makes it very attractive is the trees, the mature trees that are there. And so I echo what Michael just said and what we heard from the neighbors. Saving as many trees on this project, whatever type of house ends up being built here, I I think is one of the things that really gives Coronado its personality. And I think you should be thoughtful about that and not necessarily change something unless we have a real reason to 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 change it. And Michael's last point, and I've seen this happen in some of the work that I've done and I've had seen others done, when you disturb the roots by putting in a basement like that with a tree that's too close with a canopy that overlaps the light wells, it's very likely that tree will die. And I think, again, that should be considered. So those are my thoughts on it, which pretty much are in alignment with with my other commissioners. And at this point, unless there's any other discussion, probably not needed tonight, I would ask to see if there's a motion that could be made by one of the commissioners, please.
Well, I'll make a motion, Frank.
Sure.
I move that we continue item number SC 21-0026. The new residence at 121 Corrado, kind of Coronado Avenue with the specific direction to reduce the plate heights to eight feet at the second floor and nine feet at the first floor. To revise the window fenestration, meaning to eliminate a lot of the muttons to simplify and make it more consistent with modern farmhouse. To to simplify the roof lines in terms of roof pitch and to massage the front entry. So the roof line is more in keeping with the eve line of the adjacent roof lines. To also look at preserving trees two and four out front and have the arbors make specific recommendations on excavation around tree number one due to the basement and how the OSHA cut will affect the longevity of the tree. I'd also like the arborist to make recommendations on the 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 implications of the excavation at the rear yard grading and how that's going to affect the neighbors landscaping. And I would also like the applicant to come back with a written agreement with Mr. Katz on in terms of where the fence is going to be, the cost of the fence to him as well as the cost of the with the understanding that the retaining wall will be retaining wall will be part of the applicant's cost and not Mr. Katz's. And assurance that his landscaping and his garage structure, which will also be subject to the grade change, will not be affected. And I also have the same concern for the neighbor on Cherry behind. So those are some of the conditions. I'm open to additional conditions or direction from my fellow commissioners.
And Chairman Bishop, if I may jump in. Commissioner, Commissioner is the Commissioner, I'm sorry, I misread that. The the agreement that you're talking about is something that if we were to impose, that would normally be a condition of project approval, not necessarily something we would expect the applicant to come back with in advance of approval. Is that something that you could live with making a condition of project approval?
Yeah, I I would. Well, I I just want to make sure that two years down the road, that Mr. Katz does not end up with dead screening and, you know, problems with his pool and his his garage. So the intent is there to have something firm in writing. It doesn't have to be with the project, but going forward, there should be something in writings. You know, clarifying the agreement and understanding.
Okay, so why don't I? I'd like to suggest, and you can put this in your motion or not, that that the motion on that piece be that you in terms of continuing this, when the project comes back to you, you would like staff to include a a condition of approval that meets the objectives you've described.
Yes.
Okay.
That seems fair. Okay, so Jude, did you complete the motion?
That yes, that that was my direction to the applicant.
Yes.
And the last thing is to potentially move the house back from the 25-foot setback to be more consistent with the adjacent properties. And final condition is to bring the 108 plants forward so we can see how this home relates to that home, which is you know, currently in review.
I was hoping you'd add that. So is is that a motion or is that a conversation with, I asked for a motion. Is that a
That is a motion. That is part of the motion to to bring it back with that information.
Okay, is that the complete motion?
Yes.
Jude, do you have a square, a foot setback in mind? Yeah, because like we did on that one on Echo way back when, I think it was most of them were set back at like 40 and we said like 35 or more, something to that effect.
Yeah, I am. I am agree. Well, I would say at least preferably 35, but yeah, preferably 35 feet, something while not knowing what's planned next door, it's kind of hard to say, but it would be good, something that is a good mitigation along that edge of Coronado. Not knowing what the other setbacks are, it's hard to make a guess, but all I can say it's at least 35 feet in my opinion.
Agreed.
Okay, then David or Michael, would you want to second Jude's motion, please?
I actually, sorry, Chair, I actually have a question for you. The 108. Are you are you asking or requesting the applicant to bring 108 that one to to come back for 120 along with 108 altogether?
Well, to me, it's apparent that, you know, there are things on this plan which are directly related to 108. The lack of a fence line, a grading plan that doesn't show retaining wall on the 120, 108 side, which if he grades will kill the the pepper tree on that on that property. So I think we need to see the whole picture here to make a decision on any one of these projects. So to me, that would be direction to come back with both plans. And maybe we're going to see that plan next time. I don't know, but it would be good to know what's going on there.
So we want to see it both at the same time, basically.
Yes.
Okay, all right, agree. Thank you.
Okay, Michael, thank you for that. I think that clarified the point. I think we'd all like to see what is going on between the between the two properties to make for a better decision. So Jude's made a motion. David or Michael with, thank you, David. Then we'll we'll take we'll take the roll vote on this. The the motion is for the continuation, subject to the conditions that Jude has mentioned. So Jude?
Hi.
On the motion? Hi, thank you. David?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
And Frank is an I. So the motion passes four to zero unanimous. We'll continue this project. All right. Thank you to the owner and the designer. We look forward to working with you at a future meeting. All right. Item three, SC 21-0020, 800 South El Monte Avenue. There's a note at the bottom of this that says this item has been continued to the December 1st, 2021 DRC meeting. So we won't address that any further tonight. And we'll move, we'll move on to point four, which is a discussion, I believe, from the city attorney with the Design Review Commission over SB eight and SB nine and the implementation and formation of a subcommittee within the DRC to take a closer look at this and help us work our way forward as the is the laws change here. So with that, I was going to turn this back over now to city attorney and and to Guido to brief us, please.
Hey, Guido, do you have any introduction or you just want me to take it away?
Take it away, Eric.
Okay, I'm going to share my PowerPoint. I'm going to talk through a PowerPoint that I gave at the last city council meeting, but based on some feedback I received this afternoon about what would be of interest to your commission. There's going to be some jumping around and for some reason, sorry, one second. Let's see what happened to this presentation. I'm having technical difficulties, which I think is probably related to the fact that I have a cat who won't get off the keyboard.
Eric, can you send us that
Yeah, if you send it
presentation or is it something that's classified or whatever?
It's not classified. I'd be happy to have Guido share it with you.
Eric, and I can share it for everybody.
Okay.
We'll staple your cat.
All right, here we go again. I apologize.
You need some shrimp treats to tempt your cat elsewhere.
Yeah, there we go. Okay. I'm not going to put this into display mode because I am going to jump around a little bit to try to make this more relevant for your commission specifically. I want to talk about SB nine and SB eight. I'm going to talk about SB eight last, save that for the end. I want to focus most of the presentation at SB nine because SB nine is really going to significantly change the jurisdiction of your commission. SB nine is a law that goes into effect January 1st. It just made its way out of the legislature tiny bit over a month ago and was signed by the governor. And it allows for ministerial approval of single-family homes and ministerial approval of lot splits on single-family lots throughout the state. Going to use the term ministerial ministerial a lot. Some of you probably already know what that means, but just to be absolutely clear. What you do is is called discretionary review of projects. You apply subjective standards and and you're able to apply your discretion, your knowledge, your expertise about the community, about architecture, et cetera, to make suggestions to improve projects. Ministerial approval means that we take objective standards and an objective standard is a standard that has a yes or a no. And every reasonable person should come to the same conclusion if the standard is met. And in a ministerial approval, we're limited to objective standards, objective criteria. And if we can check all the boxes, then the project gets approved. And ministerial approval is something that happens without a hearing. It happens at a staff level. It happens over the counter. So SB nine, when it applies, is going to require ministerial approval of of homes on single-family lots and when it's asked for a ministerial approval of single-family lot splits. And those ministerial approvals aren't going to come before your commission, even though they're the kinds of things that traditionally would have come before you. They're going to, they're going to be decisions that will have to be made at a staff level going forward. And so that's why, that's one of the reasons we're talking to you this evening is to prepare you for this law and how it's going to change the jurisdiction of your commission. And also, because ministerial approval is based on objective standards and because all of the city's single-family design criteria are subjective, there are a lot covered standards and things like that in the city's zoning ordinance that are objective. But the the real design standards are are pretty wholly subjective. We need to get ready for January 1st and have something in place as applications under SB nine come in so that we have some objective criteria that apply to homes so that we can, you know, get the best possible designs in Los Altos. So I'm going to start out by talking about when SB nine applies, and then I'm going to work my way backwards and and tell you when SB nine applies, what does the property owner get in that case? SB nine applies if the criteria on this screen are met and if none of the criteria on this screen apply. So let me let me go through those slides and talk about that. What criteria have to be met? The SB nine applies to a lot that is zoned for single-family residential. Now, I will tell you that there is a lot of ambiguity in SB nine. There's a lot that's going to have to be worked out. There are fights in the courts and there are interpretations that get sent down by HCD because there's a lot in the law that is really not clear. And and one thing that's not clear is what is a single-family zone? Now, I know that most of us have a sense of what a single-family zone is, and it seems like that should be sort of an obvious thing. But I will tell you that in other contexts, HCD has told us when we're talking about other housing laws that refer to a residential zone, HCD has told us that a residential zone may not always be what we think it is. For example, if you had a light industrial zone in which a mixed-use housing development project could be approved with the CUP under the city's ordinances, HCD, for purposes of certain laws, would consider that a residential zone, even though it's really a light industrial zone. So we're not absolutely sure what a single-family residential zone is, but I think it's what we typically think of, a zone where the primary thing that you can build within that zone are single homes on lots. The the lot, so for for SB nine to apply to a lot, number one, it has to be, the lot has to be its own single-family residential. Number two, we can check throughout Los Altos. The lot has to be in the city or in what's called an urban cluster, an urbanized area. We don't have to really care what urban clusters or urbanized areas are because everything in Los Altos is in an incorporated city. So the the project cannot involve demolition or alteration of housing that is subject to rent or price controls or that or housing that's been occupied by a tenant in the past three years. So we can do a project on a lot that's not going to demolish that home that's been occupied by the tenant anytime in the last three years. But we can't demolish that home as part of the project. My understanding is that most residential lots in in Los Altos are owner-occupied. So this may not be a a major factor in Los Altos, as much of a factor as it might be in some cities. The next one, I think, is kind of an odd requirement. I've had some interesting discussions with people about, you know, what this, how this really fits in to the scheme. But the the project that somebody is proposing on their lot can't propose to demolish more than 25% of existing structural walls, subject to two really important exceptions. You can demolish more than 25% of existing structural walls if there's a city ordinance that says you can. And you can do it if no tenant has lived anywhere on the site in any residential unit on site in in the past three years. in any residential unit on site in the past three years. So let's come back to this one because I think this one has some interesting implications that are sort of unrelated to the requirement. But those are the things that have to be true. It has to be a single-family residential lot in an urban setting. That one's checked. We can't, the project can't involve demolition of, you know, housing that's been occupied by a tenant in three years. And if a tenant has lived on site in the past three years, we can't demolish more than 25% of existing structural walls. And I'm sorry because I'm not showing this in presentation mode. This slide doesn't show up very well, but try to highlight it to make it a little bit more clear. These are the things that can't be true. And I think in most of Los Altos, these will generally not be true. The site cannot be prime farmland or farmland of statewide importance. I don't know that we have any of that in Los Altos. The site cannot contain wetlands. It cannot be in a fire hazard severity zone as defined by the statute. The site cannot include a hazardous waste site. I don't think we have too many of those in residential zones. The site cannot be in an earthquake fault zone. This one may be a bigger issue in Los Altos, and, you know, we have to look at the statutory language on this one because there are sort of ways to get around flood regulations, but the site cannot be within a flood hazard zone or regulatory floodway. The site cannot be subject to a conservation easement. I don't think we're going to find too many residential lots that are subject to a conservation easement. The site cannot contain a habitat for certain special status species. And this one might be a bigger issue. The site cannot include a historic property. So if none of these is true, and all of these is true, then SB nine applies. What does it mean that SB nine applies to a project on a single-family residential lot? Well, it means you get one of two things, or both. And I want to emphasize, and I'm going to try to give you some hypotheticals at the end to make this make more sense. But you get one of two things or both. You do not have to take these two things together. You can get ministerial approval of up to two housing units on the site. So if you have an existing housing unit that's going to be kept and not demolished, you keep that one and you can build another primary dwelling on the site. Or if you have a vacant site, or if we're going to demolish existing housing, then you can build two homes on the site. You can do the ministerial approval of homes without the second thing you could qualify for, the lot split. And you get one or two homes under the ministerial approval of homes. You don't have to take the two primary dwellings. So what does that mean? That means that single-family home projects on single-family lots are going to be subject to ministerial approval if SB nine applies. So if SB nine applies, if you have all the things I said you have to have and none of the things I said you can't have, even if it's just a single-family home on a single-family lot, that property owner is entitled to ministerial approval, which means now that project isn't going to come to you anymore. So the property owner can develop up to two homes, primary homes on the lot. They also get an ADU and a JADU. So really, you can turn that lot into a fourplex. Again, it's approved ministerially, over the counter, without a hearing, based on objective standards. The project must comply with all of the city's local objective standards. And so this is, you know, hold on to that because we're going to ask for a couple of volunteers at the end of this discussion. And that's because we need to develop objective standards kind of on an emergency basis before January 1st because we don't really have those right now. The project must comply with objective standards, but we have to sort of ignore our objective standards if, to the extent that they prevent somebody from building up to two housing, primary dwelling units, at least 800 square feet in size. And we can't have rear and side yard setbacks more than four feet. So that's kind of a big deal because, you know, in a lot of cities, four feet is a typical setback. But in Los Altos, four feet is a small setback. It's kind of out of character with the city. So the only control that we have over homes that qualify for this type of approval are objective standards. And again, those objective standards can't preclude at least two 800 square foot homes. There is the building official, and it's only the building official, it's no one else in the city, would have the authority to deny the housing development project, but the building official would have to make a specific finding that the project would pose an adverse health, safety, or impact to the physical environment that can't be mitigated. These findings, the language of the statute is based on similar language in what's called the Housing Accountability Act that applies to multifamily projects of two or more units. And the finding can't just sort of be, well, just to sort of use plain language, it can't be loose and goosey. It needs to be based upon real, published, objective health, safety, and environmental standards. It needs to be a legitimate finding. And it needs to be supported by a preponderance of the evidence, which means that if the city were sued for making that finding, the city would have to convince the judge that the city was correct. Normally, when land use decisions are challenged in court, you know, the court has to throw any doubt in favor of the city, but in this case, these need to be real findings based on real impacts. So that's the ministerial approval component of it. The other component of it is the ministerial lot split. Again, the applicant can do one, the other, or both. The applicant does not have to do a lot split to take advantage of the ability to build one or two homes plus ADUs on the lot. The ministerial lot split, again, it's a ministerial process. This is the only process that I'm aware of under the subdivision map act where where a map is issued ministerially. Maps are always discretionary in California. They always have that. So this is new territory. Also, when the city approves these ministerial lot splits, the city doesn't have the ability to demand offsite improvements or dedication of right-of-way, which always, 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 agencies have always had that ability. That's one of the key reasons why you do a map, to make sure that there is the infrastructure in place that's needed for the development. The city can require at-street access. That's not defined in the statute what that means. And so a question I've gotten is, well, can it be pedestrian access? I would really defer to fire and police on whether they need vehicle access to a property to provide proper service. The statute doesn't really define what that means. And we can require public utilities easements for the property, even though we can't require right-of-way dedication. There are two requirements, you know, in addition to the long list of, well, not that long, the list of requirements I gave you at the beginning for SB nine to apply. If the applicant's going to do the ministerial lot split, there's two additional requirements that the applicant has to meet. One is that the property cannot, the housing units that end up getting built in connection with a lot split, whether the applicant requests ministerial approval or not, they cannot be used for short-term rental. So that seems reasonable enough in my mind. The second requirement is an interesting one. The applicant is going to have to sign an affidavit saying that the applicant intends to occupy one of the housing units as a principal resident for at least three years. What's interesting about this is that it's not a deed restriction. It's an affidavit. So it's not really an enforceable agreement to live there for at least three years. It sort of would be difficult to force someone to live on a property for three years if their circumstances change. It's just an affidavit and penalty of perjury that the applicant has the intent, the present intent. And so the applicant isn't lying if they intended to live there for at least three years, even if their circumstances change and their mind changes later. Kind of what's a little bit unusual about this is that the only enforceability of this affidavit is, you know, a perjury prosecution. And how do you prove that what somebody's intent was? That can be extremely difficult to do. So the idea here is to prevent land speculators and developers from abusing SB nine. And so that's there to assist with that, but, you know, we'll see how far that goes toward that goal. If you do the ministerial, sorry, one more thing before I, there is a restriction on the size of the lots. Ideally, the lot should be of equal size to one another. But the smaller of the lots cannot be smaller than 40% of the parent parcel, and neither lot can be smaller than 1,200 square feet. In Los Altos, when we're looking at 10, 12,000 square foot maybe lots, you know, the 1,200, I'm sorry, square foot rule is not a major restriction, but sorry. Can you all still see my screen?
Yes, Eric.
All right, thanks. The 1,200 square foot restriction is maybe not super significant in in Los Altos, but in some cities, when we're dealing with smaller lots, you know, we could end up with very small lots indeed with that. Anyhow, one thing I wanted to say is that once you do the ministerial lot split, you can combine it with the ministerial housing approval. If you do, then the city doesn't have to allow you to build any ADUs. You get two units per new lot, two primary units per new lot, so four primary units total. You don't necessarily get ADUs. You don't get ADUs on those lots, too. So if you do the ministerial approval of houses without the lot split, you get your two primary plus your ADU and your JADU, four units. If you do the ministerial lot split and combine it with the ministerial approval, you still end up with four units, but it's two primaries per lot. There's also a limitation on off-street parking. The city can require one off-street space per unit, but no more than that. And if the lot is within a half mile of a high-quality transit corridor or major transit stop, so in Los Altos, we're talking about major bus stops along El Camino Real, or if the lot is within one block of a car-share vehicle, so we're talking about as a car with a permanent parking space nearby, then no off-street parking can be required. Okay, so that's the essence of SB nine. Now, I did mention early on that there's this funny requirement that in certain cases, you can't demolish more than 25% of existing exterior walls. So the legislature has sort of contemplated, SB nine applies to your ability to build new homes ministerially in a project. And yet, even though it's about new homes, the legislature has contemplated retaining existing exterior walls as part of a project under SB nine. That suggests to me that when the legislature is using the term "new home", it may not mean brand-new home where nothing existed before. And what makes me think also that that might have been what the legislature was thinking is that in property tax law, a home can be assessed as a new home if it is substantially equivalent to a new home. So if you tear a house down to the studs, or if you pull out, you know, all the plumbing, the electrical, the HVAC, and, you know, maybe redo the exterior and the roof. And basically, if you update that house so much that it now has the same physical and economic life of a brand-new home, if you could market it at the same price as a brand-new home or approximately, then it can be taxed as a brand-new home. So there's some ambiguity in the statute of what is a new home. I think the statute means that if you're doing a lot more than a facelift, if you're tearing out major components, if you're tearing the house down to the studs and basically reconstructing the whole thing, that could be a new home. That's my interpretation of the law. And so what does that mean for your commission? You will still have control over remodels, but if somebody is going to reconstruct their home and basically build a new home, a home that could be taxed as a new home, and if it's a project that SB nine applies to, on a lot that SB nine applies to, then that's going to be taken out of your jurisdiction. So what's left for you? What's left for you is remodels that don't go that far, and new homes on lots that don't qualify for treatment under SB nine. Those will still be within your jurisdiction. But new homes that meet the criteria of SB nine won't. Those are going to be subject to ministerial over-the-counter approval. I want to talk about SB eight, and I know you probably have a lot of questions. I want to stop right there before I talk about SB eight and see what questions you have.
Okay, well, this Frank, I guess I'll just chime in here. That's quite an education in a short period of time. I have lots of questions, but I'm going to let everybody else go first. So we're going to work back through the order, Jude, questions?
No questions from me at this point.
Okay, David?
The only question I have is more maybe administration-wise, you know, what sort of square footage and lot coverage and all of that? When you're taking a, say, 10,000 square foot lot, cutting it in half and building two houses, I mean, are all the, you know, setbacks at 25 feet and 10 and those type of things?
Well, and again, you can apply, the city can apply all of its objective criteria, so long as they're objective criteria. We can have in place objective design criteria before January 1st. We can still impose all of that. But we can't impose those rules if it would prevent somebody from building two 800 square foot primary dwellings on the property. And we can't have rear and side yard setbacks of more than four feet. So, you know, we can say that, you know, lot coverage can't be more than 30%, or far can't be more than 0.35. And we can enforce that to the extent it lets someone build two primary dwellings that are 100 square feet with the four-foot rear and side yard setbacks.
Okay, I got lots of thoughts about all of this. Michael? Questions?
Yeah, of course, a lot of question. I mean, thanks, Eric, for all this information. I mean, we still need time to digest. But I think the main question is that, you know, with all this one, not two units or four units, if any of the units is going to be two-story, are we still going to be involved? I mean, are they required? If it's two-story, are you required to come up to the DRC or not?
So I think the reason you're asking the question is that in ADU law, there's the maximum 16-foot height limit, and if you exceed that, then they get kicked up to DRC. The SB nine doesn't include that same 16-foot height limit. The city, you know, can have whatever objective standards it's going to have. Although, well, I would be careful. Some cities are getting into trouble already because they're trying to impose very strict objective standards that make SB nine untenable. And they're already getting pushed back from that, from housing advocates, and I think that the housing advocates have potentially a good argument under SB eight, which we'll talk about later, saying that you really shouldn't be designing your objective standards to intentionally deter people from using SB nine. But subject to that, you know, we can have whatever objective standards we want about second stories to try to, if you're not going to be involved to control the bulk and mass, we can do that through objective standards. Does that answer your question?
I think what Commissioner Ma is asking, and correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Ma is, if somebody adds on to the second floor, and it's a remodel, still, does it go to them? Because they do a lot of them, Eric. Is that a correct, Commissioner Ma?
Yeah, or let's say, or for example, let's say they have a 1,500, I mean, 15,000 square feet lot. And then the existing building is either in the rear half or the front half, and they do a lot split to a second lot. You know, they say the back, the rear lot, it's a new split lot. And then they propose a two-story house on the rear lot. They say 7,000 square feet, 8,000 square feet lot, a new two-story. So that was still treated as a new-story house. So that was still treated as a new-story house coming to DRC or no?
No.
It's going to be under ministerial.
Sorry for overcomplicating your question. The answer is no, that would not come to DRC if SB nine applies. So what the city would want to do is to have objective standards in place to try to control the design of that house to be consistent with the kinds of conditions you would traditionally impose upon it.
But we, but we already have those conditions in our flag lot rules. So why can't we implement those in a lot-split situation?
And
Where you can't do a two-story home?
To the extent that you have existing objective standards in place that would apply to the project, you can certainly continue to apply those objective standards. So if we have a, if you have a flag lot rule like that, and somebody has subdivided a flag lot, then yes, your objective standards would apply.
Right, and then Commissioner Carrick, and that'll be the next part of Eric's presentation. But a lot of the stuff in the residential design guidelines that you guys quote and use are not clear objective standards. So that's what we're trying to take some of the subjective and make it objective. So that that's, some of the stuff in the design guidelines talk about making it look like the neighborhood or neighborhood feel, but that's not an objective standard as of January first for a single family. So that that's what, but I don't want to steal Eric's thunder. That's that's the stuff. Did that answer your question, Commissioner Carrick, or no?
I'll I'll sit in on the rest of the presentation.
Okay.
It's the Wild West.
So, yeah, it's the Wild West. So Frank here, I I think one, one observation that you made earlier that there aren't that many homes that are actually rented in Los Altos is probably, there's more rented probably than you think, actually. There's a lot of people that have owned homes and they've moved on or whatever, and they're they're renting them. So that's actually probably more prevalent than we probably would guess. Just that's an observation. Okay. And then another, this is more of a, I guess this is sort of an observation too. Maybe there's a question in here. So most, the way I understand what you've gone through without hearing what SB eight has to add to this, it would seem to me that most people who are not splitting a lot, but they just want to build a new two-story home, let's just go with that, what we typically see. You're asking us, and we're going to provide you with some type of a subcommittee with some of our intel, I guess, to help. That will just be approved over the counter. That's that's the way it's going to be in the future. So if we don't provide really specific objective rules, I think what you're going to find, and this is the, this is the problem with this, at least in Los Altos, is you're going to find large ugly homes that will be built, and it just circumvents the DRC. Never mind splitting lots and ADUs and whatever, whatever. But it's just, it's going to be tasteless construction. And there really isn't a way to stop that unless we have super clear objectives. Is that correct? That's right. And so That's pretty bad. Yeah, okay. I'm not sure what that's going to actually do to the whole fabric of our city. Or, yeah, so I I was just going to stop at that point. But I think that's what it means for us, guys, is whatever, whatever intelligence, experience, and so forth that we have, if we don't find a way to put it into some objective criteria, it's not going to be a pretty end, actually, with what gets built. And you you can, you know, to the city attorney, is it Eric? Is that right?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, you can drive around Los Altos, and you can see some of the pretty bad mistakes that have been made over the years before this, this group, not necessarily us, but even those that went before us, tried to help, you know, with, I I'm just going to call it, you know, tasteful construction. People build big, ugly boxes, and it's really bad. And it's unfortunate. And I don't know how, we got to really use our brain power, guys, to figure out how to try to keep things as beautiful as we try to make them for everybody. So anyway, that's Frank's thoughts on that. And I turn it back to you, Eric, and maybe you take us through SB eight, and that'll, that'll open our eyes or something here. Yeah, before I, before I talk about SB eight, I kind of want to use what you just said, Chair Bishop, and sort of segue to what I was going to say at the end, but I think this is a more appropriate place to say it. I basically concur with what you're saying, that that this, this law, it creates an obstacle for us because we're losing our ability to object or subjectively judge projects to try to improve designs. And so how do we do that through objective processes? It's November, we have three city council meetings left before the end of the year, and we're probably going to start to see projects right away at the beginning of the year. Yeah, and so what do we do about that? What we have proposed to the city council is that we really need to approach that in in kind of a three-step process. Because we have, I I think what you're suggesting is what we ultimately want to have is sort of the Cadillac of design rules that, you know, again, our goal can't be under state law to to prevent people from taking advantage of SB nine, but so that people can take advantage of SB nine and do so in a tasteful way that respects the community character. We don't really have time, to be quite honest, to develop the Cadillac of design rules before January first. That's just a reality. So what we need to do is to develop something that's as well-thought-out as possible in the few short weeks we have left, to have something in place by January first. The good news is we can do it by resolution. We don't have to do it by ordinance. Ordinances take more time than we have. And and then we can continue to revisit those standards that we come up with. We can put them through more public process, have more discussion, more thoughtful discussion around them, and try to, as soon as possible in the new year, improve those standards to, again, as much as possible. And then I see sort of a long-term goal of doing what we're doing with the multifamily design guidelines, where the city works with consultants and tries to develop the best objective standards as possible. That, you know, that process has been going on for three years. That's a process that that isn't super quick, but that's the ultimate place we want to get to as quickly as we can. But we need something in place before January first. And so at the end of this conversation, after I kind of go through SB eight, the ask is, I'd like to form, I'd like your commission to form a subcommittee. And and the subcommittee under the Brown Act would have to be limited to two people who can meet with staff and myself soon, in the in the next week, week and a half. And staff is already working on a set of objective criteria, but we need your help in looking at that set and in thinking through that set with us so that we can present the city council with a resolution that we can get adopted before the end of the year. So that's going to be the ask at the end of this. But before I go there, I do want to mention SB eight briefly. So going back to
Okay, that sounds good. Please, please do that.
Okay, so SB eight is is going to take a law called SB three thirty that right now, as of November third, applies only to multifamily housing. And it's, it will extend SB three, SB three thirty was supposed to sunset in 2025. It's now extended until 2030. Honestly, I expect it to continue, that that sunset date to be, continue to just kick out until it's just a permanent thing. That, that's my prediction. And SB eight, among other things, takes SB three thirty and applies it to single-family homes. So for those remodel, well, not the remodel projects, but for those projects, SB eight will not apply to remodel projects. But for those single-family home projects that still come before you because those criteria that I talked about for SB nine aren't met, those projects will nonetheless be subject to SB eight. What does that mean? That means a few important things that you should have an understanding of. It it means that the applicant will have the ability before they submit their first application, before they submit their formal application for the project, to submit something called a pre-application. The day that they submit that pre-application, they vest all of the standards that are in place on that date. So that means that new standards that get imposed after that date aren't going to apply to their project. So that may have some implications for the, for the projects you you will continue to get to review. The other thing is that SB eight will prevent the city from adopting new subjective standards. So you will continue to have the opportunity to review the 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 projects that that will come before you on a discretionary basis and to apply existing subjective standards. But the city won't be able to adopt new subjective standards. Any new standards are going to have to be objective. It also means that historic determinations, which traditionally get made later on in the process, are now going to have to be made by staff at the time the application is accepted as complete. So by the time the project comes to you, the historic determination will already have been made by staff. And and that will be binding on us. It also means, the the final thing that it means, that I think that is important to you, is that the city will have a five-hearing rule. So from the time the application is complete, the city cannot hold more than five hearings on that project. And when I say hearing, the term hearing is defined in the statute a lot broader, a lot more broadly than what I typically think a hearing is. Any meeting that the city holds regarding the project is considered a hearing. So if there were to be a city-sponsored community meeting about the project, that would be a hearing. We basically need to reserve a hearing in case there's an appeal. And so if there are multiple commissions that need to hear a project, we might want to combine the commissions, as we've already started doing for multifamily projects. We sometimes have complete streets and planning commission meet together, so we don't use up our five hearings. And it limits the number of times you can continue a project. So for those things that will, for those new homes that will still come before you because SB nine isn't going to apply, again, the historic determination will have been made for you by staff at the outset. You're going to be subject to a five-hearing limit for the project. That's going to limit the number of times you can continue the project. The applicant is going to vest the standards in place at the time they submit the preliminary application. And the city cannot adopt new subjective standards to apply to single-family homes. So those are the, the things that we will need to think about and watch out for going forward, again, for those new homes that that come to you. So what does all this mean, all told? If somebody is proposing a new home and SB nine applies, it's just not going to come before you anymore. If somebody is proposing a remodel, it will still come before you, and you will have all the discretion you typically are used to. If somebody proposes a new home and it's not subject to SB nine, it will continue to come before you. But SB eight will impose some limitations and change the ways that you're used to doing business. And with that, I'll stop to see if there are any more questions.
Yeah, Eric, on the, on the five-hearing limit, what if it's the applicant who, we send it back for review or to make some changes, and the applicant just says no, comes back, no response, we send it back again saying, no, these are the things that we're wanting, you know, sort of circumventing the thing. What happens after the end of the five hearings?
You need to approve or deny the project within five hearings, or else the applicant could go to court and get a, an order from the court telling you approve or deny the project. So the, I mean, that, that's it, you you have five hearings within which to approve or deny the project.
And and Eric, would you comment on the limitations of the conditions or the findings you'd have to have to deny a project?
The findings you'd have to have to deny a project, if it's a single-family home with no ADU, are are going to be the the same as they've ever been. If it, if it's an SB eight, okay, I'm using the word SB eight maybe in a non-technical way. When I say if it's an SB eight project, I mean if it's a project that's still going to come before you after, after January first. If if it's, if it's a project that's still going to come before you after January first, because SB nine doesn't apply, and there's no ADU, then the findings are going to be the findings that that they always were. If there is an ADU, then this isn't a change in law. This is true right now. The project is subject to the Housing Accountability Act. And what that means is that you don't have to approve the project the applicant wanted, but unless you can make a specific adverse health or safety finding, you have to approve a two-unit project for the site. It may not look anything like what the applicant wanted, but they they get a home and an ADU on that site. I I realize that's kind of a complicated answer. It's a complicated subject. Should I, did I answer the question, or should I try to clarify?
Well, has DRC ever denied a project? I think we always just make changes to them and
Right. And and I guess what I'm trying to say is, is sort of with that in mind, for the projects that still will come before you, that's not going to change. You will still, what's going to change is the number of hearings in which you have to make a decision. But you will still be able to make the changes that you make in the project.
And then Eric, in terms of the five, you and I are working on a multifamily project where they filed the pre-application under SB three thirty. The five-meeting rule is for the formal part of SB.
Right, the the five-meeting rule doesn't kick in until the application is complete. So the city, for for multifamily projects, that's already the rule. The five-meeting rule is already in effect. And what the city has tried to do, the city can't make applicants agree to this, but what the city has tried to do is strongly encourage applicants before their application is complete to come in for sort of pre-app meetings to get feedback from commissions so that they can, when they submit their project, it it can be a project that the city is in a position to approve. That's meant to be helpful to the applicants, and it's, it's voluntary.
And that, and that will have to be an operational change that's made after January first, that we're doing that for the multi, that if a project gets through the myriad of the laws and actually still ends up at the DRC, we'll probably end up encouraging, highly encouraging people to do the pre-app, to get in front of the DRC during the pre-app phase, so.
Again, we can't make them do that, but they should want to. They should want your feedback before they invest the money in the plans. It's it's meant to be helpful to the applicant.
Right, exactly. So I think Eric is, so, I I apologize there, I don't want to step on your toes. You're, you're right.
Yeah, that that's the presentation. So unless, you know, happy to answer more questions or otherwise, what we really want to end this meeting with is, or this portion of the meeting with is, is a couple of volunteers to form a subcommittee.
Exactly, yeah, we want to have an ad hoc committee that has time next week because our city council staff report is actually due November fifteenth. And we want at least two members, and preferably one of the two would be one of the architects that are on the call. And we want to go over the draft guidelines that we have prepared. And as as Eric has clearly said, this is going to be a phase one and phase two. Project phase one is, hey, we got to, we got to take all the good stuff that the DRC has been asking staff to do, at least for the two years I've been in Los Altos, and put it in actual resolution format, like for, and I'll give an example to, to the commission. So since I've been here, the commission really does not like applicants to show the ten-foot-tall plate heights. That's by tradition. And I understand from Sean, he's been here almost ten years. We need to actually put that something written down. By tradition, the seal heights on the second-story windows along the side elevations, you guys have been asking for at least fifty-four inches. We need to put that stuff down. So we're just really trying to codify what you guys have been asking for in addition to all of the other stuff that's already in the code about setbacks and height and lot coverage and yada, 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 all that stuff. So we're really looking for two volunteers who have time in the next two weeks to help us to do at least phase one. So that, that's where we are as of now.
Guido, this is needed, may I add something, please?
Sure, go ahead, absolutely.
And that's not to exclude input from the other members of the commission because we would be able to take input that you have that could go to Guido and or Eric and be included. And once we have a draft, there could be individual review and comment and feedback on that. But we will not have time likely for a meeting of the commission to discuss it. So the reason for trying to get two people who've got time to work with staff on this is just to put the focal time on it, but we absolutely is just to put the focal time on it, but we absolutely would take other input and suggestions from every one of you.
With the caveat.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we have to, we just have to do it in a way that we don't have a Brown Act problem. And that's why, that's why Eric has to manage it.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I, I think this, Frank, I, I think that's a good idea, actually. And so what I know member wise here is Sam is in Mexico for two weeks, so he's probably not going to be able to be, you know, in a, in a meeting, but he could certainly, I'm kind of speaking for him. He could certainly have the opportunity to read a draft and, and write a response back. Of the, of the four that are actually still on the call, we have two architects, Michael and Jude. And I think either one of them or both of them in some way would be great if they have the time. I, I'm going to rule myself out because it's, it's going to be impossible for me over the next two weeks. And David, I, I don't know what your schedule is, is like, but if we wanted to have one person who wasn't an architect, David would be the likely one. And then for an architect, Jude or Michael, you know, you, you couldn't go wrong with either one of the two or both of them. So what, what are you all thinking about time wise over the next two weeks, how we could help the city?
And, and I also want to say that you're not stopping, starting from scratch because the staff has been working diligently, putting together a framework of the standards that need to be done or things that have already, you know, that they've noticed that over the, the two years Guido's been here, the 10 years with Sean, of things that you consistently talk about. And they've, they've got a good framework of a document started. You're not starting from scratch.
That's great. Okay, thank you. So I, I'm just asking, thank you. And I'm just asking to the team, do we, do we have a volunteer or two out of the group of us on, on the call tonight?
How much time we talking next week? If we volunteer? What's the schedule like?
Yeah, probably budgeting at least an hour and a half, possibly two hours.
Just next week?
Ideally, yes.
Okay.
Ideally, yes. I, I'd like to suggest that maybe it might end up being an hour and a half meeting and then maybe if staff needs to go back and make some changes, there might be a quick half hour check in.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I'll put myself available. If, you know, anyone else want to go, that's fine. But I'm available, I'm nearby, so. Yeah. My office is actually across from City Hall.
We got one volunteer here already, so we need to.
Are we talking in person or are we talking Zoom here?
Oh, Zoom, Ring Central, Ring Central.
Oh, then, then distance is not the issue, okay.
Well, I'm out because I hate Ring Centrals. But David, it's up to you because two architects on a committee can be, lead to problems.
No, no, Jude, Jude, I'm okay. If you want to, you want to involve, that's fine.
I think the architects make more sense, just because
Jude, I, I'm, yeah, I'm fine if you want to, you know, either way.
Michael, I'm deferring to you. I'm the old jaded guy on this committee. Nine years doing this, I'm, I'm turned out in six months.
I'm voting with, I'm going to vote with, with David. I think if the two of you guys could spare a couple of hours, that would represent us the best.
You know, I'm fine, yeah. It's up to you.
Kind of busy, but I, no one else wants to do it, I guess it falls on me. I got four medical things that I gotta do, so depends on when the meetings are.
Yeah, we, we would obviously accommodate your guys' schedules because your volun, your volunteers here. We appreciate your time and we'll be respectful of your
David, given your condition, I'm happy to join. I'm just being flipped at this time of night. So
That's normal.
Yeah, well, thank you. I hope I add personality to this committee, so.
Now, you, you do. So I, I think we have two volunteers. I think we have, we have Jude and Michael that have volunteered. And I'm coming back to Anita's point of sharing some type of a draft document with, with the other three members of the commission, that you might find a subtle point here or there that gets added that may help. And I'm, I'm happy to review and comment back. I'm sure David and, and Sam, even in Mexico, if we got a way to reach him, he'd be happy to do that too, speaking for him.
Okay, and the only thing there to, to, to Anita's point about the Brown Act is we need to be very careful that, that there's no, that there aren't communications from people that result in building the consensus among
Sure, sure. I, I guess what I'm, I'm suggesting, Eric, is if it gets codified into a draft document, you send it to the other three members email, right? And then they can write back to whoever you ask them to write back to with any comments or suggestions, which I don't think has any Brown implication.
And without talking with anybody else on the commission.
Yes, exactly, yes, yes. Of course, yes.
Yes. And, and, and we, we can look at that as staff, but we also can't, you know, kind of be a hub and spoke type situation for that too. But I think, you know, so long as we're careful about that, that's fine. Okay, so I think that sounds good if, if the two volunteers perhaps could get, Guido, your schedules as soon as possible for next week.
If you want to send me, I don't know, either two or three times, you can definitely do it. Or, or also the three or four times you're just really super busy and you can't. So that we can at least kind of do a doodle poll or just figure out what, what works for everybody, so.
Yeah. And the only other thing I want to say, and then I'll finally shut up unless there are questions, is, is I, I really want to emphasize that given the short period of time that we have, we're not, you know, we'd like to go for perfection if we, if we could, but I, I don't want the, my, my goal is that we don't have a situation where we don't have any objective standards in place because we're too busy trying to, to go for absolute perfection. We can continue to work on these and continue to finesse these and we intend to continue to finesse them into the new year. We just need something reasonable in place on January 1st so that there are some design controls in Los Altos as of that date.
Okay, so, so thank you. Does that conclude the?
Thank you, guys.
The presentation? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, all right, Eric, thanks. So we got a couple of just other short things here. There's probably no discussion at all. Any commissioners reports or comments outside of what we just went through?
No. No.
Okay, hearing, hearing, hearing none. Potential future agenda items, I think we probably discussed the, the biggest one here tonight. This is really going to change the dynamics of what we do and it'll be interesting to see how this all works out going forward. Hopefully it works out in a way that, you know, the, the city still is going to be Los Altos when we're done. And I hope you guys can come up with a set of very good objective guidelines in a very short period of time. So anything else, potential future agenda items? Guido, anything for us from the city side?
Let me pull up my memo I keep for myself, the, let's see.
Okay.
We have got the city manager coming to visit us next meeting. And then we've got one, two, three, four items, November 17th. Sean's bringing one item on the 1st of December. Items on December 15th. Yeah, so we actually have, yeah, all of our meetings for the rest of the year are booked up, so.
Okay, all right, well, thanks for that.
And when's the holiday party? Or, or is that a violation of Brown Act?
No, no. Gathering, if it's a social gathering, you're allowed to have that stuff. But, you know, honestly, we probably should. I haven't actually seen all you guys in person for
Frank, can you bring some wine down?
Sure, sounds good.
Yeah, we can bring some wine from Napa, we could do that.
That'll be good.
Oh, that'd be nice, yeah.
Wednesday before Christmas, Pepper Drive, 156.
All right, sounds good.
You're too much for me. Okay, so is there, is there anything else here? Or can we, I'll look at the time here on my computer. Looks like it's 9:40. Is there anything else this evening or shall we adjourn at 9:40?
Adjourn.
Okay, hearing, nothing. Meeting closed, 9:40. Look forward to a draft from the subcommittee to review. Thank you all very much for your time.
All right, thank you.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye.